I will call to order a meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for the city of Wilsonville. Will the agency recorder please call the roll?
Member Barry?
Present.
Member Linville?
Here.
Member Akrevall?
Here.
Chair Fitzgerald?
Here.
And member Dunwell is excused.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
And this is now the point for our citizen input. Do we have anyone wanting to testify in, on Zoom or on the phone? Okay, seeing none, I do not need to read that section, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. Will the agency attorney please read the items on the agenda?
You are a resolution three, four, six, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Wilson- Let me start over. You are a resolution number three, four, six, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Wilsonville pertaining to short-term subordinate urban renewal debt for the Coffee Creek Plan District for the purpose of funding the construction of capital improvement project by the agency. You are a resolution number three, four, seven, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency authorizing the termination of tax increment collection for the West Side Plan. And you are a resolution number three, four, eight, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency authorizing acquisition of the fifth group of property and property interest related to construction of the Beckman Road Corridor Project and minutes of the December fourth, 2023 Urban Renewal Agency Meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I'd move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
I'll second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero. And I do want to correct that previously I should have said four, zero on the agenda. On the order of agenda. Seeing no further business, the urban renewal meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-nine P M. I will now call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council at seven twenty-nine P M. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Barry?
Present.
Counselor Linville?
Here.
Counselor President Akrevall?
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Here.
And Counselor Dunwell is excused.
Thank you. Will the city manager please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I was going back to previous formats.
You caught me off guard.
Sorry about that. We're bringing you back into action. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Your honor, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. And now for mayor's business, I want to start with the adoption of the 2024 state legislative session priorities as we discussed in detail at our work session. And I know we are running a little behind tonight, and I would like to thank our government affairs staff for preparing a very detailed set of priorities that include some new things that are of rather, you know, important, timely value right at the beginning of this short session. In the intro, let me just go through some of those. In summary, our 2024 legislative priorities include restoring recreational immunity for the public use of trails. And there's a lot more detail in our packet. Funding, the West Side Express Service, otherwise known as Wes, commuter rail extensions study to extend that from Wilsonville all the ways to Salem. Number three would be creating a state residential housing infrastructure fund and to oppose efforts to override land use laws for urban growth boundary expansion. And that, the detail that you can read in that is especially with regard to the focus on the need to build housing to meet our housing shortage. And make sure that we are doing that in a way that works as we've described in those materials. Number five is provide Charbonneau and Wilsonville, Charbonneau neighborhood of Wilsonville with an I-5 Boone Bridge tolling waiver exemption should tolling be put in place. We are continuing to press on that. Number six is to extend the sunset on the ending date of the vertical housing development zone incentive. And that's again, very important if cities are able, or to enable cities to add some of the housing that is so necessary. Number seven, in improved childcare resources to benefit families, workers, and employers. And we'd be working with our Clackamas County Childcare Coalition and other partners on that. So those are the main items. And of course, we will continue with our broad overview of legislative priorities that are included in the packet as we advance toward the longer session as well. Do I have a motion to adopt the 2024 state legislative session priorities?
Your honor, I would move that we adopt the twenty, excuse me, we adopt the 2023, the twenty twenty-three legislative priorities. If I-
To clear-
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. It is the 2024 state legislative session priorities.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the 2024 state legislative session priorities. Is there any discussion? I think everyone is focused on catching up with our timeframe. So thank you for your discussion earlier in the year and earlier today on that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero. Thank you. I will just briefly go over to some of the meetings. I am appreciative of the of the good work of our city, public works, public safety, and business owners and everybody and homeowners who have taken part in what I understand is a relatively safe passageway through this last storm that we had in Wilsonville. Many of our neighbors had such dire circumstances, just been a terrible situation. I appreciate that we do have so much buried power. Our power lines are almost all buried in Wilsonville, and I think that helps quite a bit. So placing all of the, so much of our power underground for many years has helped with this a great deal. Last week, we had another session of our Civics Academy, which is a seven-months-long program for Wilsonville residents. And it goes in-depth into the way that the city operates. Last week was the time that the city council was invited to join those thirty-five-some members of this year's class in Civics Academy. And thankfully, really appreciate everybody who participated in that, including past and current residents who have taken the time to go through that class. And I hope they all continue to stay in touch and let us know what they like, what they want changed, what needs attention, so we can keep having a great community. I do have a note from one of our neighbors in Wilsonville that I just received that I'm really, really glad to hear about. And this is the Oregon Dental Association, which is located in Wilsonville, is having on February 2nd their new tooth taxi service. And so they are offering, and I'm going to ask our communications department to put this on our website, on February 2nd, they will be having a tour of their new taxi. And here are some brief remarks about all the things that happen in this mobile van to help children who need attention for their teeth. So they're going to be giving a christening to this van on December 2nd. And this is an invitation to the city council. I'm sure we're not inviting, they're not inviting everybody in the world to this, but I, I do want to celebrate this. I think it's just a fantastic thing that the Oregon Dental Association has done for our community and for children in the surrounding areas. Also, on Friday tomorrow, January 19th, from 10:30 to noon, Clackamas Education Service District, the E S D, community and their community and referral assistant will be providing free developmental and hearing screenings for children ages birth through five years at the Wilsonville Public Library. So these hearings, screenings are provided by Clackamas E S D. And our doctor recommended to assess the physical, social, and emotional development of children birth to five years. So for more information, see the city or library websites. Now this coming Saturday on January 20th, our representative, state representative Courtney Neron is holding a coffee hour at the Wilsonville Public Library, starting at 11:30 a.m. And you don't have to R S V P to that. Just come down to the library at 11:30 a.m. on Saturday. And you'll be able to hear issues of concern and Representative Neron's plans to, and she will be giving a preview of the 2024 short legislative session that will start on February 5th. And I'm sure she'll have a question and answer session as well. On January 25th, along with twenty-five or so other mayors, I will be participating, I guess it's about, it's about a dozen metro area mayors in an event put on by an economic development group that we participate in, put on by Greater Portland Inc. And it's called Meet the Mayors. We will be hearing from all these mayors about what are the top things that are happening for them, how that relates to regional economic development, and current trends and opportunities. And that is on January 25th. And that is also a really good opportunity to find out what each of those cities is doing. Each city presents, mayor presents for about three minutes. Our next council meeting will be Thursday, February 22nd, 2024. I think that's all I have for mayor's business. And that brings us to our communications segment of our agenda. And we are going to hear about the Willamette Water Supply Program Project, which is probably the biggest project we've ever had around Debra. With Mr. Weigle from our staff.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and Council. My name's Zach Weigle, city engineer. And at the last council meeting, some of the councilors had raised some questions about the Willamette Water Supply Pipeline Project, kind of why it's taking so long and what, what have the issues been? So I reached out to Willamette Water Supply to provide a update on the project and answer questions that you might have. So this is really their, their update. And I'll let Mike and Eric take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Before you start, Mike and Eric, thank you. I just wanted to thank you for being here as well. And say that this is a $1 billion project. And it is being led jointly by the Twolleton Valley Water District and the city of Hillsborough. And it involves working with Wilsonville to tap into the Willamette River and build a 26-mile pipeline as a long-term water supply for Hillsborough, Beaverton, and customers in the Twolleton Valley Water District, including semiconductor chip manufacturers like Intel. And we've talked about this many times at our city council, and we've had items on our website. And as I said, it is a huge project. And we appreciate you coming to meet with us tonight to update us and help us provide more information to our constituents. Thank you.
Okay, well, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Council members. My name is Mike Breach. I am the engineering and construction manager for the Willamette Water Supply Program. So nice summary, Mayor, of the different parts and components of it. With me tonight is Eric Ward. He'll introduce himself a little bit later. Eric, if you want to go ahead and advance slides. So I think the opening, there's a little bit of delay here on our slides, at least on my end. So I think actually Zach did a good job identifying the purpose for the meeting. So really here to try and explain a little bit about what's going on and talk about what we're doing about it. And what's, some of the expectations should be moving forward. And so the outline, gonna, I'm gonna give a brief overview of what's going on with the, the program here and the Wilsonville components. And then we met with staff within about the last week, and we identified those three bullets there. See there, we'll give a little bit more detail on what's going on specifically on 95th, Kinsman. And then talk about our outreach and communication efforts for the project. Go ahead, Eric, advance. So this slide really shows all the different projects that the program is doing that affect Wilsonville. And so it's not only the immediate one that you see occurring on Kinsman and 95th, but there's a number of others. And so just kind of from left to right, we're doing significant work down by the city's water treatment plant. We call that our raw water facilities. Project where we're adding pumps, we're doing a new electrical building, we're doing some seismic upgrades and pipeline work. I'll talk more about the seismic upgrades at the very end. We did a pipeline south of Wilsonville Road. That was our PLM 1.1 project in blue to the left. The middle blue project involved a partnership with city of Wilsonville and their staff in constructing a new section of Kinsman Road between Barber and Beckman. That was our PLM two project. And then the very north end, another partnership project with the city of Wilsonville installing pipe with a road project along Garden Acres. But the projects we're talking about today are the two segments shown in red. And there's two portions. There's a southern portions to the left. That's basically along Kinsman from Wilsonville Road to Barber. And then the northern portion that falls Beckman, 95th, and Ritter. Go ahead and advance, Eric. So just to point out, besides the actual construction that we're putting the pipe in the ground and improvements to the roadway that you're going to talk about, there are another, other improvements that are being done that were negotiated with a ground lease agreement associated with this work. And so as we're constructing this pipeline, our PLM 1.3 pipeline through Wilsonville, we're also before we're done constructing another number of improvements. So there's a lot of intersection improvements related to ADA accessibility. Can see the list of intersections there. There at two locations, we're doing upgrades to basically truck turn lanes to support all the major truck traffic that in a couple of locations. We're installing some fiber optic along 95th in support for the city, doing some infill of streetlights north of Ritter on 95th. And then we'll talk more about all the concrete paving replacement work. Go ahead, Eric, on 95th. So before we kind of get into the specifics of the, a couple of the areas, just as overall summary of where are we at on the project, both in terms of pipeline installation and then improvements to the street and other areas. So to begin with, the Southwest Kinsman segment, the pipelines completed. Temporary pavement has been put down, and we're in the process of requiring the contractor to do a better job with maintenance. We'll talk more about that later. And street, final street improvements are going to come later. The next there is 95th between Hillman and Ritter Court. So again, our pipeline's completely installed. And we'll be starting a temporary paving that I'll talk about in a minute. But we have started some of the related concrete improvements. The picture you see there below is actually new curb and gutter that's going in. And behind it is new sidewalk all the way along basically the east side of that section. I'll talk more about that in a minute. Beckman Road, there's a section between Kinsman and 95th. That's, that was entirely almost on private property, except for a section that we're doing as trenchless construction. That's actually going underneath the railroad tracks as we speak. And so that really didn't have any street improvements associated with that. And then future segments involve a southern portion of 95th and then Ritter Road. Go ahead and advance, Eric. So to start with, I want to kind of focus on 95th, tell you where we're at, you know, what's happened there, and where do we see things moving forward? So the current work area begins on Hillman Court to the southern portion along 95th and extends up to Ritter Road. And so our pipe is installed. We expect temporary paving to start soon. Talk about that in a minute. And then we have been doing some driveway restorations as we go. And so one of the things, I guess, in relation to the email that you got from one of the business owners, this work is taking longer than we expected. We didn't anticipate kind of the duration and the delays that have been experienced by, you know, Wilsonville and the businesses and traffic. And it's not our intention to, to have that happen. And you know, we're, we're sorry that those impacts, you know, are extending. In construction though, we find that there are a number of unforeseen conditions and things that occur. And so I'll just kind of to point out why some of the delays have occurred, at least give you a few examples. So in that portion of 95th between Hillman and Ritter, one of the delays was there was a utility, a water line that was in a different location than was anticipated during design. It was in the way of our pipeline and required us to actually get our designers to go redesign it to coordinate with the city on that and figure out the pricing and installation for that. Another thing which kind of troubles a lot of utilities in, in the roadway are utilities, again, utilities aren't always as expected. There's a fiber optic line in 95th in that section that generally everybody expects these lines to be very shallow. And for some reason, this one fiber optic line was exceptionally deep. And it required the fiber optic company to actually go in and reinstall it in a different location out of the way. And then just as another example, as we were, our contractor was going through there, we were getting a sense that the, the work that was installed, say, 20-plus years ago by the developers was not what was anticipated. And quite honestly, it wouldn't be probably accepted, you know, in, in light of today's standards. And so because of that, there's just more concrete replacement that we will be doing in support of the work along 95th. And so that includes the curb and gutter that you saw on the east side and extensive, extensive sections of sidewalk along that side as well. So while, you know, we didn't anticipate these things, these are, these are some of the causes for the delays that have been experienced there. And so, you know, related to the contractor's schedule and where do we go from here? So in construction projects, we don't normally dictate the contractor's schedules. Usually there's a beginning date and notice to proceed and an end date. And actually, we're about halfway through the overall construction of this, of all of this pipeline through Wilsonville. We're about a year into it. We have about a year to go. And the contractor is actually almost 60% complete with the pipeline. So they are not behind schedule by any means. It just so happens that we found additional impacts to this one section that have extended the delays here. So again, we rely on the contractor's schedule and their planning. And so based on their planning, they anticipate starting work in support of temporary paving for another lane on 95th next week. They were planning to have that started earlier, but as we're all experiencing, weather and other things can delay construction work. And so that's been one of the recent delays as well. And then future work that we anticipate after the, the temporary traffic improvements are done to open up the two-way traffic on 95th in this section. Future work will include water main replacement to the south that kind of gets it out of the way. And then our pipeline installation in that section south of, of Hillman Court. And then in the spring, summer timeframe, when it's also better weather, the contractor plans to come back and do all of the final concrete paving and remaining intersection improvements and remaining driveway restoration in that timeframe. So that's kind of what's been going on 95th. Eric, if you want to advance to Kinsman. So for Kinsman, the current work area from Wilsonville Road to Barber, so our pipe is completely installed. The contractor or some of their crews are working on some minor appurtenances to that to that pipeline to finish that off. The contractor, contractor did a first go at the temporary paving. We've, we with the city have kind of found that unacceptable and basically issued a notice of basically it's defective work. And so we understand from the contractor, they're going to come back. They're meeting with the paving subcontractor next week to come in and do a better job with that temp paving in places along Kinsman Road. So as we know more about those details, we'll be able to pass those on to staff. And again, like with 95th, that future restoration work is going to likely follow in the spring, summer timeframe. Again, dependent on, you know, the contractor's schedules and, and, you know, delays and other things. And with that concrete paving will also be the truck turn lane that will go from Wilsonville to the northbound lane on Kinsman. So I'm sure Squire Coca-Cola will really appreciate that, as well as the finishing the remaining intersection improvements. Go ahead, Eric. So I think at this point, the next couple of slides, Eric will first introduce himself and then explain our public outreach.
My mute didn't work. Hello, my name is Eric Ward, and I am the program project manager for the PLM 1.0 project. That's basically the pipeline that Mike was showing in a previous slide that goes through Wilsonville. Been on the project since 2017 and, and we'll see it through to the end. In a previous presentation at council, we described the outreach program to you. And since then, we have continued to work with Bill Evans and other city staff to update the Boons Ferry Messenger and the city's website. We also update our website monthly and send out communications related to construction to anyone who signed up on our email distribution list. Of all the activities that we show here on this slide, probably the most significant is the one-on-one project briefings that, with the affected property owners, the businesses and the local service providers. Our outreach efforts went into full swing just as the pandemic started in 2020. We were challenged with how we would handle meeting requests during that lockdown. So just like everybody else, we decided to have our meetings online using Zoom and Microsoft Teams. And this provided the most productive way to handle the one-on-one information sharing. We were able to meet with multiple people within an organization from across the country with no travel required. And afterward, we shared project schedules, maps, and traffic control plans so that they could use for their planning. Excuse me, as I try to advance this slide, whoops. Sorry about this. All right. For this slide, we met with the businesses that you see here more than once for each, each one of them. And this included five meetings with our public services, ongoing biweekly meetings with the Bonneville Power Administration, multiple meetings with Twolton Valley Fire and Rescue, Smart Transit, and businesses along Southwest 95th, Kinsman, and Ritter Road. And through these meetings, we were able to coordinate temporary driveway accesses, optional onsite and offsite parking, and new routes for the large truck deliveries. For example, for Squire Coca-Cola, we decided temporarily widen their main driveway for easier truck access while we construct our pipeline. And they temporarily rerouted their 200 daily, some of their 200 daily delivery trucks to reduce the traffic impact on Kinsman Road where we were building our pipeline. And to kind of discuss our public outreach going forward from here on out for the remaining year plus of construction. We're as a project, construction is complete, is completed, we will continue our outreach communications in a phased approach, primarily focused on- the temporary and permanent paving that we've been talking about. And for each road segment, and we are restoring the roads, we'll communicate with the businesses as we've done with Southwest Kinsman Avenue businesses and their property owners before temporary paving occurs. And then we will also put a plan in place to communicate with property owners before the permanent restoration is underway. And our communications with the property owners and businesses include emailing notifications, announcing what we're doing next, monthly and sometimes even more often than that. And we also field calls and emails from them when we send those notifications. We also commonly invite them to meet with us and they request those meetings as well. And, and then we also have in place a plan for handling complaints that come in from the public. And some of them arrive through the city of Wilsonville staff, but the vast majority of them come directly to the Lamont Water Supply Program. And when needed, our construction management staff will meet with the business owners and the property managers to lay their concerns or to deal with their, with whatever issue, whether it's a truck access or problems with a temporary access that we have put in place. We also follow up with the Wilsonville staff to let them know that, that how we resolve the issues in the complaints, the ones that they received, and then we also the ones that we received that we let them know about. So when the property owner for shredding systems incorporated emailed city council and the Lamont Water Supply Program, I immediately got back to him. I'd met with, with him in person previously and I thought that he was on our email distribution list. And although other folks in his company were on the distribution list, he had not received the schedule updates that we provide. And he's been, he's now been added to our email updates and I will also reach out to him weekly to talk to him about the restoration of 95th so that he understands what's going on and when. And also future one-on-one outreach efforts include meetings with our public services as we coordinate the construction in Ritter Road to, that will impact their recycling hauling. In a nutshell, we're going to continue our outreach efforts. It is a priority of ours for completing a successful project.
Okay, thanks, Eric. Just a couple few last slides here and then we'll wrap it up and be open for questions. But I guess, one, we do appreciate the successful partnership we have had with Wilsonville with that Kinsman Road section where, again, the new section of road got put in while our pipeline was installed. That was actually the first pipeline that went into the ground for us. Likewise, with the Garden Acres Project that really serves to open up some development area for the city of Wilsonville. And then the last example here, and you can go ahead and advance it, Eric, it relates to our raw water facilities. And so again, this is the, this is the work being done down at the water treatment plant for Wilsonville where we both use the same intake into the river. And so what you see here is a picture of some of the work going on to seismically upgrade the slope adjacent to the river. Cause without that falling a major earthquake like the Cascadia Subduction Zone, modeling suggests that that bank is going to move, the pump station is going to break and it's not going to be operational. And so we spent a lot of money upgrading that, seismically upgrading the building, the intake, everything that really benefits both of us to start our water supplies. And so again, we appreciate working with Wilsonville, their staff and, you know, the patience that they've given us. And, you know, it is our priority to get done with this work as soon as we can. And we want to leave behind something that Wilsonville is going to be very, it's going to be very acceptable to Wilsonville. You know, and I'll just say one last thing, that additional curb and sidewalk that we're doing along 95th, that wasn't anticipated. It wasn't in our bid documents. We talked to staff about it. Really, the contractor couldn't anticipate it. And so the program is just doing that as additional improvements because that's kind of the right thing to do. So I'll leave it at that and open up to any questions or comments that you might have.
Well, thank you very much for coming to meet with us and updating us as close as we could to being in person with this storm situation. Before I, I start, I wanted to, because we're on Zoom here, I want to go to the city manager. Do we have people on Zoom who have questions at this point, or should I wait till the next section?
I would wait till public comment, Mayor. Do it all then.
Okay. So at this point, do members of our city council have any questions? Council President Akrevall.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the information. I think this is really important for council to hear and broader Wilsonville community too. You know, I think, I know, I know that you're aware of, of the emails that we've received and, and concerns from the community. I wonder if you could go back to the slide that had some of the timeline details that was especially helpful to see kind of, you know, what we're looking at there. It was earlier in the slideshow.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It takes, it, there's like a I don't know why.
That's okay. And then I, yeah, 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 this was good. So encouraging to see pipeline complete 95%. I mean, those, that's encouraging, right? To see, to see those figures, I think for community members, the street, the paving thing, I mean, that's very apparent. That's their, their lived experience is, is the street part, right? So that becomes a pain, a pain point for people. And I'm, I'm curious, what, what is, what was the original timeline for these segments? I, I'm sure we're, we're going to hear from our community members. Have we done, but can you help us remember what those original timelines were for, for these segments?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Eric to, he's, he's closer to those numbers. I don't know them off the top of my head. I guess I'll, I'll start though with, you know, you know, overall, which doesn't address those people who have to deal with 95th, right? So I get that. Overall, our contractor is on schedule. We anticipate, you know, them finishing on time. They constantly, and it's quite typical where we don't direct what they do between the start date and the end date. That's just common practice unless there's a really good idea, reason to have a constraint. So we put a constraint in, for example, for Ritter Road because we had a lot of coordination with BPA. And so we wanted to make sure that that went well. And so with, with that said, it, there's a plus and a minus to that. So it allows a contractor to employ good construction thinking, which did actually happen on this. And so they were advocating doing the section of pipe installation along Kinsman in the fall when the groundwater is lowest, which is the perfect time to do it. Otherwise, they would be fighting groundwater. It would be much more of a mess on Kinsman and it just would have drug out. So that's an example where that's a benefit of allowing a contractor to, to, to kind of be responsible. In this case, when, when all these things come up and, and, and also the contractor hasn't always done a great job meeting what they said they're going to do schedule wise, it just becomes problematic. And unfortunately, that's happening on 95th here. And then, and again, it's regrettable to us and, and it's not what we intended. And, you know, we, had, had we had perfect designs, it would have been anticipated and we'd likely would have been done. But, you know, that's not the world we live in. And so, but Eric, I don't know if you can specifically address, you know, what were those original timelines?
So for instance, the Southwest 95th, the one that's currently needs to be temporarily paved. The, when I met with the original, met originally with property owners, many times I talked about a seven-month timeframe for that road portion. Kinsman, I estimated, we all estimated about six months to get that done, partly because of the curves. There's some tricky pipeline laying that goes on there. We, and then on Ritter Road, I spoke to, when I, we're, we're dealing with some with, that's in the future, the, the summer and that, that, there's a lot of work with the BPA on that one. I anticipated seven months for Ritter Road as well. And, and then the contractor's schedule didn't fall too far from that. A lot of the time when we were meeting with the property owners, it's before we even had the contractor's schedule, we were way advanced, we were in advance, we were in the, in the design so that we could give enough notice to the property owners so that they could plan for us. So anyway.
Well. Yeah. So I'm curious though, then like the, you know, like the, and you had, you had a good image in one of the slides where you had the pictures of the postcards that go out and, you know, it's some of those pieces that are trying to communicate to people, but there's dates on those postcards. So what, where do those dates come from?
They come from our project estimates throughout the life of ours, of the program on all the pipeline segments, 30 miles with length. And we're, and I'm, I'm dealing with one tenth of that with our 3.3 miles in Wilsonville. That comes through our, our scheduling over time and update, updating the scheduling as projects get completed in it. And so we're, we're always adjusting that schedule based on, and even during design, before we even let out the construction, we run into issues such as groundwater that has benzene in it and things like that, 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 that we have to take care of, the costs that, that take months for us to take care of. So, so those, those original dates on these cards, they came from our master schedule before we, during design. And then once we have the contractor's schedule, we work those contractor's schedule dates.
Yeah. So once we're into construction, it's really the contractor who owns the schedule and owns kind of the means and methods to get it done. Now, if there's problems, we can, you know, do things to direct them and, and, and which we're, we're doing in some cases here. But normally it's, 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 it's usually up to the contractor to figure out what is the best way to execute the work, given all the conditions and constraints from the required start and finish dates.
Okay. It looks like Counselor Linville has a question, so I'll, I'll let her jump in here. Thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Linville?
Well, I, my question was very similar. Thank you, thank you for the, for the update and the presentation. And I think the discussion about timelines is, is, is important to us because we, in addition to the conversations that you have, we, we have conversations with our, our citizens as well. So one of the things that would be helpful, I think to me is that we, we don't, as the council, always see the postcards and the communications that go out. So when we get questions about, well, how long is it going to take? When is the anticipated date for Beckman to Hillman to be done or 95th to Peters? It's difficult for, I mean, I, I would, I feel really uncomfortable saying, well, it's just in the future. That's what we are told. It's just in the future. Is there a way that the council could have better updates about when the anticipated times are? And if those timelines get changed? So that we have some better information and we kind of know maybe what's going out to the public as well. So that's my question.
Yeah, it's a great question, great observation. And Eric, we need to definitely work with staff to figure out how all of the information that we, we create, that gets sent out, that, you know, appropriately gets sent to the council as, as well. So we can work with, that's a great observation. And actually, I'm almost surprised that we're not doing that. But yeah, a great observation. And then, you know, if there's other things that would be useful, whether it's regular updates or you know, whatever, whatever is that right form, we're, we're more than happy to provide any kind of updates that the mayor and the council would appreciate. So.
Well, thank you. I, I think what I, I'm thinking back to some of our earlier meetings, we did have some really in-depth discussions about communication about this quite a while ago. And I, I took a photo of the, I had a postcard on my bulletin board for quite a while. I took it down. Now it's in another part of my house. I can't get to it, but, but I think it said, it might've been one of those that I saw the backhoe on that this, this project, you know, it came to my house would be completed in August. So that was good to send it out, but I, but again, how do we, I, I think we're going to need to add another step to that. And, and when there's a postcard that that says a completion date, which I understand is the original completion date, I think it would be good to say estimated. And I think you had it as an, as a footnote on one of these slides. Always have a, if we could, an asterisk that says, these things can change due to unknown conditions. You know, and telling people stories, giving them some of this information. And maybe it's on the website, but I think we as a council need to have that more often. And I would like to ask for you to meet with us at least quarterly.
Sure.
And go through this kind of a discussion. And, and I really appreciate that your meeting, as you've described, with all of these property owners, one-on-one. I actually drive on 95th as often as I can. I want to compliment you on, you know, it, it goes, I probably, that is my main route because I just always want to see how it's going. And it is making progress. It changes, you know, I can see it's making progress. And I've always had very good experience with the safety management of the, you know, the flaggers and everyone. And I've even walked up until where I see, wait, I should turn around and go the other way. I bet they don't want me there. But, but you're, you know, a lot has been accomplished and I appreciate all of that. But could we schedule quarterly meetings and then could I ask for something to be sent out? I mean, maybe you've already said this and I'm asking again, so sorry if this is a repeat. But are you doing a comprehensive checking back in with people about just letting you know that we found this fiber optic cable that was 15 feet below where, you know, all these things that you've described that you've had to mitigate, it makes a lot of sense. And I've worked on projects like this too, where I've done my fundraising for capital projects and you know, they'll discover something underground that is just completely unanticipated. And, and I know it can set a project back several months and cost a couple of million extra. And nobody could have predicted that at the beginning. I think people need to hear more about that kind of a thing so we can understand. And then also here, and therefore here are things we're doing to pick up the pace or do the temporary paving.
Right. Yeah, I'll, I'll let Eric, if you want to, there's anything specifically you want to comment on, on how we have communicated any of that information. And maybe it's just, you know, with specific business owners perhaps, but is there anything you can comment on that?
Yeah. Well, so one way we do it is when we do the monthly email updates that, that speak to, we ran into a utility very briefly speaks to. Yeah. But we also, we, we sort of prioritize property owners around that. For instance, if we do run into a utility, we prioritize property owners to let them know one-on-one, some of them, one, some of it's just us emailing them directly, just them to let them know that, that something's going to take longer or that something's different. And it's, it's all, it's always basically everything on that list, but, but mainly direct email and some phone calls. And we always, any, anytime where they ask us to meet, we meet. We'll, we always do.
Well, that's great. I appreciate that.
One, one more, one more thing I'd just like to convey. It looks like Counselor Linville has a comment too, but what, it's got to be probably really frustrating for people or construction projects in general is if you don't understand how they work, about a third of the time is all administrative. You know, it's the behind the scenes, it's the submittals, it's the reviews, it's negotiations, you know, in the case, it's, it's a little bit more challenging in this case because we're directing a contractor, but we're having them do work on the behalf of the city. And we want to make sure that the product that we end up with is something the city is going to be really, you know, favorable to the city. And so there's that, that extra administrative step. And unless you've gone through a project, you're just not aware of it. And it might seem like we're not doing anything when actually there is a ton of work going on behind the scenes.
You're definitely doing something.
Yeah.
Counselor Linville?
So I guess my question really is, I mean, uh we we don't need, I mean, I don't need to know, you know, kind of the the weekly email kind of things. But I'm wondering, um Zach, if you uh you get those and you know if there's a significant issue that has arisen that's going to make a make a significant impact on on the timeline or whatever else. Are you getting those? And is it possible? I mean, what's the best way for us to kind of, I I, you know, just kind of a a memo or something that says or an update that says, um, you know, this this is going on. And just so you know, you know, this this is a significant in- impact on the project. It's being mitigated, blah, 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 blah. But it may result in delays or something that we could have so that would be helpful in our responses.
Yeah, I think um, I mean, we get the uh monthly reports. We have a staff person that uh attends a construction meetings. Um I think uh getting the schedule is has been difficult on this project. Um as Mike mentioned that um the getting this, having the their contractor stick to the schedule has not been consistent on this project. So that part has been a challenge um to get like accurate uh dates of when things are going to happen. It's constantly changing. Um so I don't know if Mike or Eric, if you want to speak more to that, but um
Yeah.
It's something I I guess I would need to think about, think about um what what we could do that would be beneficial for council.
And yeah, and 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 we could, we 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 should think about that kind of outside of this meeting uh with city staff, Zach and others, and see if there's a a something else that we should do that would be more beneficial than kind of the standard uh mailings that 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 we send out. So we can, we can definitely um work on that. And I guess, you know, we're doing about fifteen projects right now all at the same time. And uh the specifications that we have are essentially no different than any other pipelines. You know, you know, each contractor just kind of has their nuances. And there's things they're good at, there's things they're they're not so good at. And, you know, hitting schedules on some of the details, you know, that have been conveyed by this contractor uh aren't aren't as good as comparatively some of the other contractors. And so um anyway, they're they're doing quality work at the end of the day for us and the city. Uh but the schedule part has been frustrating and challenging for us as well. And again, we're trying to uh, you know, drive this thing to completion as as quickly and thoroughly as we can.
Is there anything that we can do that our voice can do to help with that?
I I appreciate the offer. I I I think we're we're uh it's it's helpful for to get your feedback and input. I think we can take this and and we can make sure the contractor understands these things. So I think we can do. But I do appreciate the offer.
Well, I'd like to share this portion of the YouTube video with them as well.
Yeah, I would be more than happy to meet with them. And I appreciate that they are doing quality work. Um and I think that one of the biggest things that I'm hearing is that there are a lot of changes is what I've heard. And so we prob- and you're you're making an effort to communicate with the people that need to be communicated with, which I really appreciate. But I think we need to hear from the contractor that they are going to change the approach and know that we need to have more accurate timelines delivered to our staff, who will then deliver those timelines to us. And then we will want to hear a quarterly report on how that's going. Thank you.
Yeah.
I could say from, you know, from the city staff, we're releasing, you know, portions of the permit um and placing conditions on portions of the work. So we're not releasing any more of those segments of of pipeline until uh Kinsman Road has been repaired and until the temporary paving on Ninety Fifth is done.
Okay.
Throws their back open. So uh
Ten points in three remaining effort, yeah.
Yeah, those remaining portion on Ninety Fifth and that section on Ritter Road, those aren't going to start until some of these things have been taken care of. And that's really, that's really what, you know, that's really the only influence we have is is what work can we release? Um so, yeah.
Well, I I appreciate everyone's time in this discussion because I have faith that this will have an influence. And um we look forward to hearing back from you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Stay safe. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right. Um, that brings us now to our citizen input and community announcement section of our meeting. And this is an opportunity for visitors to address the council on any matter concerning the city's business or any matter over which the council has control. It is also the time to address items that are are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff in the city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes and use the raise hand feature of Zoom to let us know you would like to provide comments. So I will ask the city manager, of course, to guide me on who is there because I can't see any of them.
I'm going to ask Zoe to do that because she has uh in control of the chat features there. So I think she's asking people to raise their hands if they wish to speak.
Okay.
And I do believe we have someone from the HBA that is uh that filled out a speaker card.
Yes, and I have a letter here, by the way, that I I just saw in my email and the other councillors may have it also from Preston Corst, Director of Public Policy and Government Affairs, a letter.
And he's here and ready to speak, Mayor.
We'll start with Mr. Corst. And if you would um state your your name and affiliation.
All right, I think I'm queued up. There was a bit of a question. Are you guys ready for me?
Yep, we even see you. You're even visible.
Great. Well, thank you so much for having me. I appreciate you uh taking the time. Um and I and I appreciate and apologies for getting the uh initial communication to you guys so late. Um there was a bit of, uh as you can imagine, no delay more than one thing um for folks uh in our industry. But I appreciate you taking the time um to hear me out. So my, again, my name is Preston Corst. I'm the Director of Government Affairs at the Home Building Association of Greater Portland. Um I represent and I'm a local representative for HBA. So I work in six different counties in forty cities and within the metro's jurisdiction. So um that obviously keeps me very busy. Um but I'm here today to try and um shed a little bit of light. First, to thank you um for being the City of Wilsonville, for being a long-term uh partner uh for members uh for our members in the home building community, from urban growth boundary decisions to localized urban infill uh private policies to, you know, overall land development, design and funding uh opportunities that you guys uh are are known for. Uh there are two things that we want to express a little bit of concern for and see if uh city council would be willing to direct staff uh to to reassess essentially um and and take another look at. Uh they wrote, they're essentially revolving around two fee increases uh for single-family detached homes and and other products as well. Uh the first of which is the Parks SDC fee increase, which uh went into effect, essentially doubled fees uh from seven thousand to fourteen thousand a unit uh starting in January first twenty twenty four. The second of which is the Frog Pond West infrastructure fee, which due to uh apparently due to um mostly uh inflationary costs and and pressures, that fee has gone from about, I think it was twenty twenty eight or so thousand to about thirty five thousand. So essentially, in a matter of two weeks, the cost to build a home in Wilsonville has increased by about fourteen thousand dollars. And we just wanted to express our concern and say, hey, that's a big increase, uh especially for projects that are in the the pipeline as it uh in the development pipeline right now. A lot of builders operate on pro formas that were established a year or two ago or or more. Um and essentially wanted to just call out the fact that the City of Wilsonville's per unit fees for SDCs and fees uh in just two years have jumped about fifty three percent from about seventy thousand to over a hundred thousand dollars a unit. Uh so what we're hoping to do, and we uh want to appreciate staff's willingness to engage with us and our members, we did have a preliminary meeting to express our concern and sort of try and get a better understanding of the fees. Uh we are hoping that staff, and I've communicated with a couple members already today on staff, but we were hoping that uh council would give them direction to take another look and see if these fees might be phased in for a time and perhaps exempted if projects were applied for prior to, say, July of of last year. So so that projects that are currently in the process of being built or uh submitted through the application process are adversely affected and can remain viable. Um and and essentially, this would result in greater housing affordability for uh City of Wilsonville and for the city's residents. So I will stop there. Um I'm happy to to take any questions you might have. But uh again, want to thank you and staff for for hearing us out.
Sorry, I was muted. Um, thank you, uh Mr. Corst. I I did want to ask if I understand, you've been speaking with the city manager. Before we ask questions, would it be useful for us to hear some from the city manager?
Uh is I'll let, yeah, I'll let the city manager.
Uh is is Chris Namsoo in this chat feature?
Yes, I've just promoted him.
All right.
Think it would be helpful to give us some context if you don't, if that's all right, Council Linville?
Yeah, I I think we gave quite a bit of context uh via email in response to the initial request, but we have had some internal conversations about things that we reasonably could do. Um and I'll let Chris kind of highlight those for you right now.
I think everyone must be on the internet. My internet has been really slow. So Chris should be appearing soon.
Hopefully, that power outage.
I think Zoe is promoting him to panelists.
My apologies. My apologies, Mayor Fitzgerald and council. Sorry, I just uh getting things organized here. Uh apologize for my hair. I've been outside tonight. And so I'm not ready for this. And uh I apologize about not being ready for this because I've been sitting here watching and didn't think I was coming on TV. So
Sorry, your hair looks
I will turn off my computer, at least my screen, my video. Uh so sorry, you saw what what state I'm in. That's the best I got. But uh correspondence with uh Mr. Corst at the Home Builders Association staff is definitely showing some willingness to try to try to provide some accommodations. We provided the council with a written summary of all the events that occurred up to this point. And um my evaluation of that situation is that the the staff followed all of the appropriate measures that were a part of the noticing requirements. However, we are truly partners in our home building and we understand the difficulties that Mr. Corst is describing. Couple of things that staff has uh had some internal meetings over the last two weeks about would include um things like stepping in the increase over a period of time, you know, doing a a portion of the fee now and a portion of the fee later. Another idea for the Frog Pond fee would be to collect that at a later point in time. Currently, it's required to be paid at issuance of the building permit. The staff is comfortable in moving that timeframe um to a framing inspection that's later in the process that would be several months down the line. So that would afford a considerable amount of time and allow the builders to be able to um organize themselves to be able to accommodate that fee. So those were two things that staff was very comfortable in bringing forward to the city council. And we could do so at the February nineteenth meeting, bring a resolution forward that provided a a spirit of partnership, some reasonable accommodations in the city showing that spirit of partnership by trying to do some small but reasonable things that we think would benefit our home building partners. So hopefully, that's helpful context.
Thank you, um Chris. And I just wanted to clarify that city council meeting is on February twenty second.
That's right. Correct. Second meeting.
And so in terms of um just to to summarize um for people listening, could you just briefly summarize what you described as the many steps in terms of providing notice? And we we've had earlier meetings about the reasons for these fees.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Okay.
Uh, the Parks Department ran a process for the Parks SDC update that was consistent with the statute. It included notification, the Home Builders Association, as well as all of the local home builders that are in our community. We tried to do a very good job of reaching out and trying to provide that communication early and frequently, providing ample opportunity for input. We have required public meetings. We have required notifications under the Oregon statute that involve providing written notifications. We have a courtesy meeting. And upon adoption, the council was faced with a choice of of going to the full legally defensible amount, which would have been a significantly um larger amount of money than than was what was actually adopted with the ordinance. The ordinance came in at about fourteen thousand. I believe the legally defensible amount was upwards of twenty five thousand dollars per home. This this particular SDC has not been increased since two thousand and eight. So it's it's beyond time for it to be increased. And uh Mr. Ammerman and his team took that through the process, checked all the boxes. So uh it's unfortunate that we find ourselves at this point in time um facing these types of 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 complaints and criticism and concerns when we reached out and we did not receive any particular input uh from the association or from any of the members at the time that we went through the process. I believe there was actually no input uh provided, which to us means that there aren't concerns. The council even went as far as delaying the actual implementation of that SDC by an additional one hundred and twenty days, creating a another four-month delay in the implementation timeline. So, excuse me, again, my review of the situation would be that uh the the boxes were checked, the statutes were met, and legal notifications were satisfied. Uh however, again, in the spirit of partnerships and recognizing the impact that this can have on the cost of new homes and homes in the process and home buyers, the staff wants to be a supportive partner would be would be able, upon council's direction, to find reasonable accommodations for that. Uh regarding the the fee for the um Frog Pond fee, that is included in development agreements for each of the subdivisions in Frog Pond West. And so each of the developers signs a development agreement that outlines the fact that the fee can be increased twice a year, recognizes that uh we we are only in this because we are doing infrastructure on behalf of the development community. And so those are all things to consider and keep in mind as well as we go forward. But again, moving that point in time from issuance of the permit to um the point of the framing inspection is probably, you know, three to four months in my estimation, which again is just another accommodation. It's a reasonable accommodation, however, because the city wouldn't be foregoing any revenue under that particular scenario. We would be collecting the full amount. It would be slightly delayed. The reason that the city cannot forego revenue on the particular uh fee, like a stepping, like you can do on the SDC, is because we are under construction with a real project that has a shortfall on the budget. So uh we need to be sure that um we're collecting the appropriate share and not burdening future projects for the community. So hopefully that, I'm sorry for such a long answer.
I really appreciate that, Chris. And I'm going to ask for one more.
Okay.
One more kind of overview. If you could just briefly tell me, just say, for the people who don't come to these meetings a lot, what, why is an SDC service development charge? Why does it exist on new projects?
Right, right. So uh systems development charges, there are five of them that the city collects from from all new development that occurs across the community. There's a systems fee for water, sewer, streets, stormwater, and parks and recreation. And that uh systems fee is intended specifically for development to pay its proportionate share of the required improvements that the city needs to build to make a wonderful city, to make an incredible place. A wonderful city, to make an incredible place. We need parks in our neighborhoods. So this is the developer paying house by house their proportionate share. Of the required infrastructure that our community needs in order to be livable and the wonderful place that it is.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I've got um Councilor Lindville with a question and then our city attorney. Or comment or something.
Um, did we lose Mr. Corst? Is he no longer with us?
Uh no, it's um, it's because it's public comment, he gets three minutes. It's not meant to be a Q and A, but if you want to re-promote him to panelists to ask him a question. Uh I could have Zoe do that.
Well, I do have one, I do have just one question.
Okay.
Hello again.
Hi, thank you for coming back. Um, so um. Uh I I appreciate that you're here and I appreciate that you've worked with our staff and that. It looks like there might be some opportunities. I uh I I am just a little confused about. Why it is that um. It's almost been a year uh February of last year. Uh again in May, again in June and again in August when. Um HBA was notified of and invited to participate. And why was it that there was no participation at that point?
Yeah.
At those, at those points.
Yeah, it it's a great question and and from my, from my records anyway, I think we were notified in. The May or June um. Timeframe and and that that usually is is normal, the ninety day notice is when we get a letter or something like that. At which point we can investigate further. Um and and I'll be completely blunt with you guys here and again, I mentioned that I work in. About twenty-five to forty active cities within our region and each of which charges an SDC or four or five. Um so we don't necessarily have the option to track as many of these discussions as we would have liked. Um so there's capacity issue, but there's also um, you know, it's unfortunate that I think the top four or five builders. Um single family home builders in Wilsonville did not know themselves, so. And I and I talked to their division presidents and I talked to the permitting staff and and none of them essentially. Uh were aware, so I think there's there's work to be done on our part for sure, uh but. But oftentimes builders are operating in multiple jurisdictions. And they have and staff are mostly out in the field and there's a lot of, a lot of. Other things that they're doing, so it's it's hard for them to be paying attention to emails. Uh each one that comes by from many multiple government jurisdictions. Uh but that's not a any excuse. I think the biggest question for us is. Um the timing of these these fees and we're and again, we don't, we're fully supportive of. Local jurisdiction's ability and and desire and need really to to charge SDC fees. We're fully supportive of that. Um I think we're just concerned about the timing um and and the rationale, especially for the infrastructure fee. Um that one seemed to come more out of nowhere than uh than I believe the parks one anyway, so that's a long-winded answer saying. A little bit of everything.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh Amanda, Gail Hinman, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think Chris gave a really good summary. I wanted to make one clarification in case it wasn't clear on the infrastructure fee. Is what staff have discussed is that the delay would only be on the increased portion. So the portion that the home builders have already committed to paying because they have signed these development agreements. That portion would still be due at issuance of building permit, but what we could talk about doing is delaying that. The payment of the increased cost until the um framing inspection, which as Chris mentioned, you know, adds. A few months um deferral of that payment, so. Um I just wanted to provide that clarification that there still will be some of that fee that's being paid at issuance of building permit. Um and I also just wanted to further clarify. Um I believe our park staff is sending this over right now. My understanding is not only did our building division. Um staff communicate to some, to the home builders who were actively seeking building permits about. Upcoming increases, including the Parks SDC, but I believe that the local home builders that are active in our community were invited to the open house. Um that was held on the Parks SDC, so that might, so. I I do want to say, you know, the staff really did do uh an effort to try and reach out to our local home builders who are active in our community as well.
Right. Thank you very much and and I remember, you know, we we care. Um, I know I care, I I I talk to other counselors as well about our business economy and we build a lot of. Uh people, home builders. Builders are very active in Wilsonville. I shouldn't say we build them because they're the ones who are building them. And and for many decades, this has been, as I think Mr. Corst said, a place where a lot of homes. Have been added to the region in Wilsonville. Um and and where, when we talked about. The the study and the questions about the parks. Um SDCs. Um I remember we um, we heard feedback that. You know, that the infrastructure that. Is here in Wilsonville, the types of parks, the look, the sidewalks, the complete streets is part of getting a house sold. And so that's the community that we've heard our p- our people want and and we. Were, you know, over the evolution of time. That is the kind of neighborhood that we see in Wilsonville and it doesn't come. Um, you know, none of these things are free. It does contribute to. And I hope it continues to do effective home sales so that the home builders will see continued good sales of their homes. And continued success for the builders and continued um great neighborhoods for the people to live in. So that it just, you know, this is what we're doing. Um and 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 I I look to see more good success from the work of um the design of these neighborhoods. To keep the demand for the housing sales up, which contributes to the successful business. And um I I do understand and heard about all of the different efforts of notice that went out. By our Parks Department. Um appreciate that and I think the council was pretty diligent in making sure that the word was out there. Councilor Lindville.
Your honor, I I I appreciate your comments. I recall specifically asking. That question when we were di- when we were addressing our. Uh the question about increases in the SDCs and. And I and I, I specifically asked the question, do at, you know, have our. L- local builders been notified? I um think it's very gracious of the city to try to find accommodations. If there are possible and. Um, you know, in stepping it up, the step, stepping in the increases over time. Or collecting the that increased portion la- at a later time. Uh during the building process and uh so so I wanna, I wanna commend our staff for being willing to do that and. Recognizing that that we do appreciate that the home builders. Are a partner for us. Um and I look forward to our February twenty-second meeting when. We will um be able to hear what those accommodations might be.
Thank you, very well said. Um, I appreciate your comments as well. And um we've got a lot going on for that February twenty-second meeting and we want our home builder partners to be successful. And look forward to talking more about that. If there are no further comments, we will move on to counselor comments, liaison reports and meeting announcements. Except wait, I think there might need to stop and ask, do we have more people waiting to make comments?
It does not appear so.
Okay, because I can't tell. All right, thank you. Um that brings us to um Council President Akervall.
Thank you. Um, let's see, since our last council meeting. I have just a few things um to note on. I I attended actually the CIS. Um, their board meeting, um because they, whi- which was held in Wilsonville because they are building a new. Um facility that will be in Wilsonville along Wilsonville Road. Um and the portion of the board meeting that I attended was talking about this. This new building and looking at some of the designs and talking about what the use of the building will be and desires. Um and they would like this to, of course, um house their staff in operations, but also. Serve as a training facility for some of the training um programs that they do. Um, so it it could be a a building that um, you know. Many people in local government and elected positions across different cities would would come to and. Of course, we would um welcome to have those those partners in our city and um the learning.
But no, I was just gonna ask if you could explain the in the acronym.
Oh, what CIS is? I did not cover that. No, and now I need to come up with the acronym. Perhaps staff can help me. Um.
City and county insurance services, I think.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so they provide um insurance for City of Wilsonville. As uh for many cities and um have a strong partnership relationship with League of Oregon Cities. Um, the executive director for League of Oregon Cities sits on the board. Um. So does that kind of help give give background on on who CIS is and the. The type of people that that may be coming to that training facility as well and and. Um what they would be learning about. Um so that was interesting. And um I also, last week, well, we all participated in the the Civics Academy and that's always a. A great opportunity and an honor to go and and speak with um. These members of our community that have um declared interest in learning more about their city and perhaps finding. Um additional ways to be involved and just um deepen their understanding of operations of the city of. Um some of our staff members, things like that, so so it was a. A good time with them just last week. And that also rings me around because now, let's see, is this, staff could probably help me, this is the fifth or sixth cohort. Staff may come up with that number. If, I believe it's somewhere in that ballpark.
You're talking about when Civic Academy started? That was, I think, was in twenty fifteen.
Yeah, I think you were the, you were the original.
Original, so actually now we all have to do math. Twenty fifteen, this is more than fifth or sixth. This is like a long time. So we've had many cohorts of the Civics Academy. You're right, thank you, Councilor Berry. Um, and we also now have the, which means that there's a a lot of alumni to that program. And um now there's the two point O Civics Academy version, which is just an opportunity periodically. To have um people that have completed that program that um, you know, have shown an interest in the city. Away for for them to kind of continue in the the learning journey. And um they're focused on a specific topic and the next one is January twenty-fourth. Um six P M. At City Hall and again, that's for any of you all civ- civics academy folk that. Um interested in learning something additional and it will be about urban renewal. Um so I think the emails have been sent out to participants, which are now numerous of that program. It's terrific. Um, and I think that is it for me for for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lindville.
I always forget to unmute myself. Thank you, uh Mayor. Um, so um on the tenth of January. I attended the opioid settlement um board. And at that meeting, uh the board decided to set aside thirty percent of all of the funds that are coming into the state. Um that will be retained by the state. Uh and not distributed to cities or counties, that thirty percent of all of the funds over the next. Uh remaining years of the settlement will go to the tribes. And um so that uh that, once those um monies are starting to go to them, they will. Work, they will work together to decide uh what the uh distribution, the allocation of those. Funds will be. Um they have to be um utilized in conform. And yeah, in concert with um the uh federal regulations and so. Um, so that was the, that was pretty much our whole meeting. Um, on the eleventh of uh January, I participated with our city. Um, uh attorney and our city manager and our uh community uh group. To uh on the opioid awareness community group and joining us at that meeting was April Heron, who. Uh many of the members of the council will recall came to the city council with one of her uh partners. She is a um. Uh Public Health Senior Program Coordinator with Clackamas County Public Health. And it was really great to have her participation with us. Because she brought with her the information about the county resources. I think that group is energized and I'm really excited about. Um hopefully coming back within a month or so, uh maybe two months to bring back to the council. Um so the recommendations on how our funding will be spent there. The next meeting we're thinking about will be in March and and the groups are coming. The participants are coming back with plans with dollar figures attached to them, so um I'm excited about where that's going. Um on the twenty-fifth, uh I will be as s- several of the other council members. Uh uh participating in the Clackamas Cities Association Dinner, which will be in Canby and that is always a. Really good event for us to uh get together with our other elected officials at. Uh that, within the cities in Clackamas County. And then um our Winter Fest, our employee Winter Fest has been rescheduled. And it's going to be on the twenty-sixth of January. And then on the thirtieth, um I will um attend my first Aurora Airport. Excuse me, plan, excuse me, Planning Advisory Committee. And at that meeting, uh we are going to. Excuse me, review the working paper number one. And the FAA approved forecast, so um I'm gonna work, excuse me. I need a little drink of water. I'm gonna work with our staff um to look at those documents before that meeting. Um and then um I'm, I will participate with the rest of the, the, the uh group that will be. Um on our sister city um celebration um visit. Uh departing on the second of February. That's my report.
Thank you, Counselor, uh Counselor Berry.
Thank you. So um I also attended the Civics Academy last week with the other city counselors and. Uh I just think that's such a wonderful program. I'd really like to commend Zoe Monberg. For leading it and uh putting together a great program. Um like we mentioned earlier, Chris, uh Council President Akervall and I were in the original. Uh program and it just gives you such a great introduction to all the different departments that the city has and what we do. And um a great program. Anyway, so um. Let's see, yesterday I I attended the Clackamas Sea Forest Subcommittee. And we spent a lot of time talking about the TriMet uh Transportation Plan. And then we also talked about the Forward Together two point O program that's going to build on the TriMet's Forward. Together one point O program. Uh and then the other discussions that we had was on. Uh, and then the other discussions that we had was on the EPA Climate Solution Reduction Program. And they're going to be offering a grant. And I'm not, I I reached out to Chris Nanso and um it it sounds like. Uh, that might be some opportunities for us to apply, but I'm not sure if we're really going to be pursuing that. But it's a resource that should be looked at. It's to reduce the greenhouse gases. In the United States and in particular in the Wilsonville, Oregon areas. So that's exciting. Um, let's see, coming up uh next week, I'm also planning on attending the Canby Dinner. And then attending the program for the sister cities in Japan in early February. That's my report.
Thank you, Counselor Barry. Um, I really appreciate all that. And I'm going to take the liberty of adding to my mayor's report a little bit because I was moving really fast to try to get to catch us up. Um, but I I wanted to just again reflect on the effects of the storm on on some of our neighboring cities. And how serious that was. Trees, um apparently a lot, a lot of this had to do with saturation of the ground. But you may have read in the paper that in Lake Uswigo, I think fifty trees went down. Houses were damaged. Um, you know, people were hurt. I know one person lost their life in Lake Uswigo. And it's just a devastating time for our communities. Um, and we may be hearing about ways to help people who have suffered those effects. Um, I also wanted to talk about the trip to Kitakata. And how um I I forwarded an email to the council today that I received from Ms. Magumi Dotay. Who is with the equivalent of their Chamber of Commerce um in industry there. And they have arranged um a a very good next step in one of our goals in the sister city relationship. Which has been economic development and just understanding, you know, what are some great next steps um that that may. Maybe in the future for these, for Wilsonville and Oregon and Kitakata and Japan out of these relationships. We are one of, I I believe, twenty eight sister cities. Um, anyway, that one of the things that they just notified us about is that they have developed um a one day for us, which is. Uh, essentially like a a business fair, so to speak. So we will be able to meet people who have these, these, um I would call them flagship business interests. In the Kitakata agricultural region that are really important to them, um including. Um, their sake brewing brewing, uh their ramen production. Um, there is a, uh, we're going to meet somebody who has a Kitakata franchise, Kitakata Rama franchises in the United States. We will be hearing from them. And then one of the most exciting things, we have to go very far to see this, is going to be very interesting. Is we are going to meet with um one of the um significant importers of Oregon hazelnuts. In Japan and hear more about that and learn more about that. Um, so I'm excited about that. Um, and I appreciate the members of our volunteer um sister city committee. That have decided that they also will go and they've taken, you know, it's a big um. Investment on their part to go along on this trip and represent Wilsonville. We really appreciate that they are. And we appreciate, I, we're, we are being hosted by our colleagues in Kitakata as we hosted them. So it's gonna be very interesting and I'm quite a fan of our agricultural industry in Oregon. So I'm excited to see our Oregon hazelnuts featured in that Kitakata region. So with that, we will move to our consent agenda. And I would like to ask the city attorney to read the items on the agenda, please.
Resolution number three zero three nine, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute. The intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County relating to the Stafford sixty fifth Elixin Roundabout Project. Resolution number three zero seven six, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing an an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Wilsonville. Pertaining to a short, with the city of Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency pertaining to a short term urban renewal debt. For the Coffee Creek Plan District for the purpose of funding the construction of capital improvement project by the agency. Resolution number three one zero seven, a resolution, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with. Venture Properties Inc. Regarding the funding and construction of the Beckman Creek Regional Trail and associated Beckman Creek Trailhead Park in the Frog Pond Terrace subdivision. Resolution number three one zero eight, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute the intergovernmental agreement. With Washington County for design of public utility improvements on Basalt Creek Parkway. Resolution number three one zero nine, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing acquisition of the fifth group of property and property interests. Related to construction of the Beckman Road Corridor Project and minutes of the January four twenty twenty four city council meeting.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been read. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
As read.
As read.
Thank you. Is there a second?
All second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes four zero. That brings us to new business. Um, resolution number three zero nine nine. And we have Mr. Lorenzen with our our Economic Development Manager for a staff report. And we have a very thorough packet or a description of this program in our packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Fitzgerald, um Council President Achavall and the city council. Um, my name is Matt Lorenzen. I'm the city's Economic Development Manager. It's uh my pleasure to bring you resolution three zero nine nine tonight. Um, as it reads in your staff report. Um, the time we spend together here, the next few minutes is really trying to answer the question included in that staff report. Does the council support the findings of the Town Center Urban Renewal Feasibility Study and adopt resolution three zero nine nine? Including final ballot language, referring the question of Town Center Urban Renewal for an advisory vote on May twenty first, twenty twenty four. What I will present in the next few minutes, um y- you've probably heard. In bits and pieces many times before, you've been briefed dozens of times over the past five years on all the content. I'm going to try and summarize as succinctly as I can. Um, but as we lead up to a potential vote in May, uh it's important that the viewing public get this information as well in a succinct format. And so I hope I can do it justice, uh that we can have a discussion. And and take a vote on this important issue that we've been working towards for quite some time now. In May of twenty nineteen, over two years of thorough, uh after two years of thorough and equitable award winning public outreach. The city council adopted the Town Center Plan, which establishes a vision and policies for the future of this important area of Wilsonville. To guide its development as a vibrant, walkable destination that inspires people to come together and socialize, shop, live. And work. Furthermore, the plan calls for active parks, civic spaces and amenities that provide year round community and cultural experiences. Within a built environment that is denser, taller, safer, more accessible, more efficient and more compelling than today's town center. The vision is not the vision of staff or some private entity or other interest group. It is the vision of the Wilsonville community. As they expressed it in thousands of survey responses at over a hundred community engagement activities. Since twenty nineteen, city staff has been diligently working to implement the plan, taking careful and thoughtful steps that will ensure success. In twenty twenty, uh our engineering team uh made updates to the city's transportation system plan. Uh, to adopt and incorporate uh transportation projects that are found in the Town Center Plan. In twenty twenty and twenty one, uh the ci- city staff, engineering staff led the uh the community through. Uh, the visioning process and the design process for the I five bike and pedestrian bridge and the plaza at its landing. In twenty twenty one, uh an an appendix was added to the Town Center Plan, which is the streetscape plan. That will govern the local street network that we uh find in the Town Center Plan. But we know that the Town Center Plan and these studies that I'm telling you about. Uh, we find in them a realization that the vision and the realization of it will require both private and public investment. As well as unwavering commitment to the community's vision through proactive initiatives. In other words, the policies and the regulations that we find in our master plans is likely not sufficient on its own. In twenty twenty two, we completed an infrastructure funding plan for Town Center. And that demonstrated that public infrastructure projects contained in the Town Center Plan will require a substantive and flexible funding source for their completion. The study concludes that urban renewal, also known as tax increment finance, may be the only tool powerful enough to bring these projects. And the greater vision to fruition without raising taxes, without raising taxes. Fortunately, Wilsonville has extensive experience and a track record of using urban renewal in other parts of the city with great success for the past three decades. Indeed, many of the parks, roads, amenities and neighborhoods that make Wilsonville the highly livable city that we know today. Were made possible through the successful execution of the year two thousand and West Side Urban Renewal Tax Increment Financing Plans. Which will both be closed, by the way, by the end of this fiscal year, having accomplished their respective community development goals. And having increased the tax base dramatically in both cases. It's noteworthy and entirely coincidental that you voted to stop increment collections for the West Side Plan. Or just earlier tonight during the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting. In twenty twenty three, we engaged the Urban Renewal Task Force, a volunteer group of residents, stakeholders. Especially impacted taxing districts and subject matter experts. We worked with them and best in class consultants to undertake a detailed feasibility study. Of urban renewal as a potential funding source in Town Center. That study, now complete, lays out a clear framework for the responsible execution of a potential future Town Center Urban Renewal District. Including a proposed boundary, blighted conditions to be remedied, funding capacity calculations, a list of projects, potential projects. Impacts to taxing districts and reasonable development projections that, if realized, will provide the tax increment required. To finance the projects the community has asked for, including, but not limited to, construction of a new main street. To establish a city center, bicycle and pedestrian improvements, including a bridge over I five. Parks, green spaces and public gathering spaces, Wilsonville Road Intersection Pedestrian Safety Improvements. Construction of local streets in partnership with private developers to provide greater connectivity, safety and the infrastructure necessary to serve new development. Finally, relocating underground utilities where needed in order to allow for new development and redevelopment in the area. The Town Center Urban Renewal Feasibility Study is attached to tonight's resolution as exhibit A. From a strictly legal standpoint, the council has everything it needs to begin the formal process to create a new urban renewal area by ordinance. But as a matter of precedent and tradition, though not required by city charter. The city council has historically asked Wilsonville voters for their support through an advisory vote. Whenever any new use of urban renewal is being proposed in the city. The city ca- this city council in similar fashion has directed staff to prepare a resolution and ballot language. In order to refer the question of the formation of a Town Center Urban Renewal District for an advisory vote, based on the findings of the feasibility study. Tonight, we're here to discuss and consider resolution three zero nine nine, which does just that. The proposed ballot language contained in exhibit B to the resolution asks the voter. Shall an urban renewal district be formed to fund infrastructure and facilitate new development in Town Center? If the council moves forward tonight, staff will be executing a strategic and multifaceted communication and community outreach plan in the coming months. In order to educate the voter before the May twenty first election. Staff cannot intentionally influence the voter or suggest they should vote for or against the ballot measure. But we can and intend to provide as much objective information as possible to Wilsonville voters. Information that is thorough yet straightforward, so the Wilsonville electorate can cast an informed vote in May. Staff feels confident in our due diligence and in our messaging to the public. We feel urban renewal is the right tool to bring the community's vision for Wilsonville Town Center into reality. Tonight, staff recommends that the council take the next step in our thorough and well documented process and adopt resolution three zero nine nine. And at this time, I welcome your thoughts, questions and discussion before your vote. Thank you.
Matt, thank you for that excellent presentation. I really appreciate the way you brought in the visuals and um captured mountains of reports. If we printed all of that out and stacked it up, it would probably be six feet tall. So thank you very much. Uh, council, do you have? Um, I I think what we want to do here is we we will be, I will be asking for a motion and a second and then having discussion. Before I do that, does anybody have a clarifying question for Matt? Okay, seeing none, then I would um like to ask for a motion. To adopt resolution number three zero nine nine, Council President Achavall.
I actually do have a clarifying question.
Oh, you have a clarifying question. Okay.
Um, I'm curious, have we heard any um input from task force members? On this item in the in the most recent days?
Nothing in the most recent days. Um, yeah, uh, Council President Achavall, as as a member of the task force. We did get some input from you on the the ballot language, which we incorporated. Um, but uh no, I I've I've bumped into a few of them and they've said, what's the word? But no further input.
Okay, I just, I knew that some of them have been following it closely and and wondered if you had anything to share um additional. Thank you. And I guess I I would like to make a motion unless there's other other.
We certainly will discuss it in this, in this discussion period, so.
Yes.
Please, um, if you would like to make the motion, Council President Achavall.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution number three zero nine nine.
There a second?
I second it.
Motion has been made by Council President Achavall and seconded by Counselor Barry. To adopt resolution three zero nine nine. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Um, I just, I feel tremendously excited at this moment. Um, because I think reflecting back on what the West Side and the year two thousand urban renewal plans. What those have meant for the city and how much they have shaped the city. Um, you know, it it's quite remarkable and here we are perhaps at that, at that cusp again. Um. I think that the the Town Center Plan presents tremendous opportunity. And um. Here is a chance to realize, you know, you know, some of those dreams that were um. Laid out in that Town Center Plan. Um, and I, you know, I I guess seems a little sentimental. But these plans take a long time to to enact. And um it will be a long time before what we see built in in the core of our city. You know, resembles what what the plan has um laid out. But considering all of that, I think, I think back to my conversation with the second graders at Lowry. And what they um, what they describe as wanting from their city. And I see a lot of those elements in the Town Center Plan. And I feel like this could potentially be a pathway to get there. And um I think it's a pathway to get there in a way that's healthy for the city. Um, and I I I guess that's, that all of those things bring me to a a point of excitement about this. And um anticipation and um just great hope that that our city um sees these things in a similar way.
Thank you very much. And I see, um, do we have other questions? Other comments, Counselor Lindell? Counselor Linville?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to just forward my congratulations to the committee for all of their work, Matt, for your leadership, and Counsel President Ocrevall for your leadership in the work that has been done to get the... to this point. It's not been... It's not been just a small amount of work. And I'm excited as well because I think through this plan, we may not see all of the pieces come to fruition, but we will have set, I think, in motion what our citizens have envisioned for quite some time. So I'm just excited about it as well. I think we need to be sure that our citizens know that this is not a tax, this is not going to... That it's our taxing agencies that have been willing to forego the revenue, and which is a great sacrifice for our city. And so, congratulations. I think it's a great move for us.
Thank you. Counselor Barry?
I'd like to echo everything that Counsel President Ocrevall and Counsel Linville had just said. I think that the staff has done a really good job educating the council about all the work that's gone into this vision and the planning, and that it is not a new tax. It's taking money aside and then inputting it so that we can build a better future, and that eventually it will bring more revenue to the city. I just think it's a really great opportunity, and everybody's done a really good job. So, thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. And with all of those inspiring statements, I am very inspired myself. I'm going to take a slight sidestep and read some technical language. Because I'm... In the staff report, in the executive summary, I just think urban renewal is something that not everybody walks around talking about. So I just want to give it one little more moment on the stage. And this is from our staff report. Just to recap, that urban renewal, also known as tax increment financing, or TIF, is a public finance tool used by cities and counties to cure, quote, "blight", unquote, by supporting new development and redevelopment through the investment of tax increment within a defined geographic area. When a new urban renewal area is established, a boundary is defined, and the tax revenue derived from the assessed value of properties within that boundary is frozen in time. Taxing districts receive the same annual tax revenue from the properties within the boundary for the duration of the urban renewal plan that governs the urban renewal area, often 20 to 30-plus years. As assessed value typically increases year to year, and that has been seen by the charts that Matt just showed, those graphs. As the assessed value typically increases year to year, and as a new development and redevelopment create new assessed value within the urban renewal area, the associated tax dollars, known as the tax increment, are divided from the frozen base and set aside for urban renewal. The tax increment funds are used to pay for public projects and other programs that spur new development and the overall revitalization of the urban renewal area. So, the thing that I take away from that is, as we walk around that Town Center area, drive around, ride bikes, and you can envision these streets that we saw in the diagrams and that you will be able to see on a new website that I think is ready to go, Matt, is that ready to go yet?
The language contained on the site still needs to be reviewed by the Elections Division of the Secretary of State's Office, but it is, I would say, effectively ready for showtime, otherwise.
Soon, we will have a great website that shows a lot of the things that Matt just described. But as you envision, as I think about a developer considering building a building or buying one of these buildings and redeveloping them, the idea that the urban renewal tax increment financing tool that we are just about to vote on will give them essentially what can be considered a head start on that by getting some of those streets, infrastructure, water, sewer, started so that there's a lot more impetus and reason to jump in and do that development. If we didn't have this, I think we'd be waiting a very long time, as we've heard from our neighboring cities and as we've heard about the cost of projects. So, I think this is a great time for this. And thank you to the members of the Urban Renewal Committee for all of their work, which is a cross-section of industry, retail, our neighboring agencies, and our schools, fire department, and so forth. So, with that, if there are no other comments, I will call for the vote.
The last comment is, one of the reasons why I'm so impressed is that Wilsonville has had several projects. I mean, like Matt had showed, that we've had successful urban renewal projects, and that just makes me feel like we have a great track record, and that helps us go forward in the future.
Thank you very much. Well, seeing no further comments, I will call for the vote. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. All right. That brings us to our public hearing, and I would like to ask if we could have about a three-minute break.
Mayor, we're not on public hearing yet. We're on continuing business.
Oh, we're on continuing business.
But you can still take... You can still do a break if you want.
Could we have a three-minute break, please, and reconvene at nine... Let's say 9:27? Reconvening our meeting. Thank you again, Council President Ocrevall, again, for leading the Urban Renewal Task Force. And that brings us to continuing business. This will be the second reading of Ordinance Number 888. Will the city attorney please read the ordinance?
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 888, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville to adopt the 2023 wastewater treatment plant master plan as a sub-element to the City of Wilsonville Comprehensive Plan and the wastewater treatment plant capital improvement project list.
Thank you. And because we had a detailed staff report at the last meeting, we're not doing that today, right? And I did not attend that meeting, but I watched the meeting and read all the material. I call to order the Wilsonville City Council's second reading on Ordinance Number 888, as has been read. Does any member of the council have any questions for staff or the city attorney on Ordinance Number 888? Hearing no questions, do I have a motion on Ordinance Number 888?
Your Honor, I move to adopt Ordinance Number 888 on second reading.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Counselor Linville has moved, and Counselor Barry has seconded to adopt Ordinance Number 888 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Okay. I will just add, because I was ill, not able to attend the last meeting, but I will reiterate some of the comments I heard, which was, this is a... Which I agree, this is a very significant study and look at our... At our wastewater treatment to develop... Which basically has developed a 2023 wastewater treatment master plan, and it is really an important... A hugely important part of the health and future of our growing city. And it's a very comprehensive and thorough report that had the involvement of our Planning Commission, our City Council, and many experts. So I am in favor of this master plan. And I'm going to ask you again, is there any further discussion or are there any further discussion or remarks by any member of the council before I call for the vote? Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. Those in favor of adoption of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye. Those opposed will answer no, and those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the roll.
Counselor Barry?
Aye.
Counselor Linville?
Aye.
Counsel President Ocrevall?
Aye.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Aye.
And Counsel Dunwell is excused.
The motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Now, we will go to public hearing. And will the city attorney please read Ordinance Number 886?
Yes, and Mayor, as is typical of these ordinances, I will read both of them, both titles, but you will vote on them separately on first reading.
And before you start, should I read this thing aloud, or...?
Let me do the title first, and then you can... This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 886, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville annexing approximately five acres of property located at 7252 Southwest Frog Pond Lane for development of a 17-lot residential subdivision. And this is the first reading of Ordinance Number 887, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville approving a zone map amendment from the Clackamas County Rural Residential Farm Forest 5-acre, RRFF-5, Zone, to the residential neighborhood RN Zone on approximately five acres located at 7252 Southwest Frog Pond Lane for development of a 17-lot residential subdivision.
I call to order the public hearing regarding Ordinance Numbers 886 and 887 on first reading. And as you see on the screen, for this public hearing, you can go to Zoom and click "Join a Meeting" and enter webinar ID number 8153036056468. Please use the hand feature if you'd like to speak, or you can call this number on the screen, 1669-900-6833, webinar ID number 81536056468, and press *9 if you would like to speak, or you may email ci.wilsonville.or.us. Do any members of the City Council wish to abstain, declare a conflict of interest, or report any ex parte contact or any information gained outside of the hearing?
No.
No. Have all members familiarized themselves with the application?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the participation of any member of the City Council? And do we...
No one is raising their hand.
Pardon me?
No one is raising their hand.
We have no one raising their hand. For all those... And I read the material about, for all those wishing to testify, as I described on the ways of contacting, please be aware that failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this City Council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, based on that issue. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria that staff will describe, or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which you believe apply to the decision. City Council meetings are open to the public. The meeting may also be attended remotely in accordance with Oregon law. Information regarding how the public can attend this meeting remotely and give testimony is posted at City Hall and on the city's website. Notice was given that testimony could be submitted for the record in advance, in writing, by emailing it or mailing it to the city recorder. Testimony may be submitted in writing at any time prior to the closure of the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony in any form will be accepted. If you want to provide... And I already described how you can provide public testimony, and it's shown on the screen right here. When called upon to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the City Council, simply indicating you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify is sufficient. At this time, I call for staff to present the proposal and list the applicable substantive approval criteria.
Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and councilors. My name is Cindy Lookshoi, Associate Planner, and I am here tonight to present for your review Ordinance Numbers 886 and 887, which are an annexation and zone map amendment for the Frog Pond Cottage Park Place 17-lot subdivision. As required by statute, I would announce that the applicable review criteria for Ordinance Number 886 are included on Page 2 of the annexation findings in Exhibit C of Attachment 1 of the Council Staff Report. Review criteria for Ordinance Number 887 are on Page 2 of the Zone Map Amendment findings in Exhibit B of Attachment 2 of the Council Staff Report. The proposed 17-lot subdivision is the 12th development proposal in Frog Pond West. The subdivision will connect to the previously approved Frog Pond Overlook subdivision to the north and Morgan Farms subdivision to the south, blending together as one cohesive neighborhood consistent with the Frog Pond West master plan. The subject property is located at 7252 Southwest Frog Pond Lane. The property is bordered on the north and south by land that has already been annexed to the city with other subdivision projects, including the southwest Frog Pond Lane and southwest Brisbane Street rights-of-way. Properties to the east and west of the subject site are in unincorporated Clackamas County. The subject property is located in Clackamas County in Zoned Rural Residential Farm Forest 5-acre. The property proposed for annexation includes tax lots 1,200 and 1,300. The property is contiguous to land currently in the city, within the urban growth boundary, and master planned for residential development. All property owners and a majority of electors have consented in writing to the annexation, and as a result, council is able to move forward with annexing the property. The proposed zone map amendment is to rezone tax lots 1,200 and 1,300 from Clackamas County Rural Residential Farm Forest 5-acre to the city's residential neighborhood zone. The rezone is consistent with the comprehensive plan map designation of residential neighborhood, as well as with the Frog Pond West master plan. On January 8, 2024, Development Review Board Panel A recommended to City Council approval of the proposed annexation and zone map amendment by Resolution Number 425. At the January 8 meeting, the DRB also approved with conditions a Stage 1 preliminary plan, Stage 2 final plan, site design review of parks and open space, tentative subdivision plat, Type C tree removal plan, middle housing land division, and waiver for the proposed subdivision. Approval of these requests is contingent on City Council approval of the annexation and zone map amendment before you tonight. Based on the information presented, staff recommends approval of the annexation and zone map amendment requests. This concludes tonight's presentation by staff. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. The applicant's representative is also participating in tonight's meeting and is available to answer questions as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Does the city attorney have any questions or comments to add to this?
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make a statement or offer any... Thank you. Would the applicant like to uh, make a statement or offer any additional information? Oh, I think you're muted, even though it doesn't show mute.
How about now?
There you go. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. I am Glenn Sutherland. I am a land use planner at A K S Engineering and Forestry, and our address is twelve nine six five Southwest Herman Road, Suite one hundred, Walden, Oregon nine seven zero six two. Uh, I have a presentation prepared, but I don't think that there's really anything uh, that I could add. Uh, staff did a great job presenting the uh, property and issues at hand. Uh, but I am open if you have any questions.
We did, we did have this material ahead of time. Everyone read it. As you said, I I really appreciate you coming to our meeting, Glenn. It's always really great to have the applicant here for questions.
Thank you for having me.
Well, thank you. It looks like we don't have any questions. Um, thank you for the thorough report. Um, and I, is there anyone in the Zoom call wanting to testify or phone or anything of that nature?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Hearing no further testimony and everyone having, no, no one wishing to testify further, I hereby declare this public hearing is closed at nine forty-two P M on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I would like to, I'm now going to ask for a vote on ordinance number eight eight six.
Think you, you'd like to have a motion.
I'm sorry. You know what? We've, I've been doing this since five P M. We all have.
That's why we're here to support you.
Let's start with a motion. Okay. Could I have a motion on ordinance number eight eight six? Uh, Counselor Berry, would you like to make the motion? Wait.
Oh, no.
I think she just disappeared. Well, I'm afraid to ask for anyone else. They might disappear. Okay.
I will make the motion.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance number eight eight six on first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion to adopt ordinance number eight eight six on first reading has been made by Counselor Linville and seconded by Council President Ockerwall. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion on ordinance number eight eight seven, please?
I, I will do that. I will make that motion. Uh, Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance eight eight seven on first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, the motion has been made by Counselor Levin, Linville, and seconded by Council President Ockerwall to adopt ordinance number eight eight seven. I'm going to pause for a minute. Counselor Berry, you might, I have a bit of a weak connection here, and I think your connection dropped out for a minute, but we have had a motion by Counselor Linville, seconded by Counselor Ockerwall to adopt ordinance number eight eight seven on first reading. And I'm now calling for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. And that brings us to city manager's business.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right, legal business?
Yes, Mayor, apologies. Um, but since we did have a discussion about the um, having a special work session for term limits, and I know our calendars are pretty busy in February, um, I'm hoping that maybe I could get some dates from councilors that, and and you, Mayor, that would maybe work for that special work session.
Yes.
Um, so our meetings, our next meeting is um, February twenty-second. So, um, I, I know, I believe, Mayor, Mayor, when um, are you returning to the States?
On the nineteenth.
So it may be best to try and do it the week of the twenty ninth, of January twenty-ninth.
I was just gonna ask that. I would rather do this in January.
So um, how do, how do people's calendars lurk, look? Um, I know um, the nice thing is, is that that week is a fifth week, so I, we actually don't have a, you know, D R B meeting that Monday, so from a city per, city staff perspective, that Monday would be fine. Mu, actually, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday would be fine for me, um, evening.
Okay, um, those, those three dates happen to work for me. Anyone else?
Which day is it?
That'd be the Monday, the twenty-ninth, Tuesday, the thirtieth, or Wednesday, the thirty-first. I think we may have a preference for the twenty-ninth.
Um, Your Honor, I have, I am free on the twenty ninth, the thirtieth, um, I have the Aurora Airport PAC meeting from five to seven.
Okay.
And, but I could do an evening meeting on the thirty-first at uh, as long as it's five or after.
Okay. Thank you. How does that look for you, Council President Ockerwall and Counselor Berry?
So I, I lost some of the audio. We're talking about having a meeting about the trip to Japan.
No, this is, this is a special work session to continue our conversation on the term limits.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And we have a preference if, I mean, I'm I'm wondering for you and Council, Council President Ockerwall, how does the evening, and it could be five, again, we'll figure out the time, but how is after five on the twenty-ninth?
That works for me.
Okay. That looks like it's the selection. Thank you.
Okay, we will get that planned then.
I do appreciate some um, doing that sooner than later while it's all fresh in our minds. Any other legal business?
That's it for tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
I am adjourning the meeting at nine forty-eight P M. Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.